Call the meeting to order. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to be public for which it stands, one nation in a good hour, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get approval of the agenda? Any questions on the agenda?
Some more.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Four, board report. Presentation? Six, consent agenda.
You notice on the personnel report, it looks like I forgot to change the rationale. Maybe number one shouldn't be on there.
Maybe.
I might have been from last month. One, two, for twenty-five, twenty-sixth contract, three and four, yearly assignment. So one, I think, I forgot to scratch that off from last month, maybe. So it should be two, three, four, and five to coordinate with one, two, three, and four.
Okay. Well, I was like, hmm, how did that be in a new decision? She's not doing that before.
I just noticed that now they put it on the big screen, so.
Okay, Karen's retired.
And there was a retirement that was turned in.
Okay.
And just added today.
Okay, like, yeah.
Yeah, at the end yesterday, twice.
Okay, yeah.
Get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some more. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Number eight. No, we. Seven, sorry. Seven point one, review of budget year-to-date.
Budget year-to-date, we're at ninety-nine percent. Last year we were at ninety-eight. This will be the last one you see for fiscal year twenty-five. Then next month, you'll have the first one for fiscal year twenty-six.
Seven point two, approved treasury report for July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. Current cash balance is eight point six million. There we go.
I'm going to approve the treasures part for July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Seven point three, approve twenty-twenty-three A bonds treasury report for July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Hey, the cash balance in the bond account that we're using to replace the rest of this, one million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand or fifty-four dollars.
Questions?
I have a question. Should that be, should that be gone here shortly for the first part?
For the first series of payments?
Yeah.
They've got a little bit left. I've got a binder in my office, I need to look at them, but I don't have.
And then?
Yeah, because we'll have.
And then what was the use-by date?
The use-by date is, it's a ways out.
It's a way, it's three years from when we issued it.
Okay.
But the use-up date for this will then be next year, because then we'll kick in phase three for the LTFM.
Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
Some more.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Seven point four, approved regular bills.
Jackie's busy.
Probably the most I've seen on that list.
This would be, Rudy's busy.
Oh.
Any questions?
The only thing that I had is like, what was, what has Pipestone Interiors done? Carpet. Oh, this, okay. Duh.
They have a little bit of apartment and a couple of small office spaces.
Okay, I mean, I figured it was justified, but I was just curious as to where it was that they were working. Okay. That was really my only question. I didn't, just wanted to know where it was, and I was questioning the bill.
And that's part of our LTFM, with some carpet.
Got it. Perfect.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve the regular bills?
Some more.
Sorry.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Approved high school activity bills. Are there any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
Some more.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Eight. Eight point one, board reports and updates.
Last week, Tammy and I sat in with, excuse me, what's her name from Portrait of a Graduate? Laura. With Laura and discussed, went through some of the Portrait of a Graduate that the teacher, the teacher went through, and just some of the ideas. And we got some, did some really good ideas, did some brainstorming on different ways to get it out, so that people know about it, parents, community, et cetera. And then, I think that's about.
Did it come out on the app today? Did I see that come through on my phone?
Okay, yeah, good.
Well, that's good.
Good. We were just talking about making it really visual.
We started to explore the women playing idea, I thought it was great. And then, also Rick has done a proof and sent it to me on inclusion in the program. I think one of you two had suggested that, the activities programs, so.
Yeah, yeah. Katie, it was all Katie. Katie had a.
I was, I was doing good that day. I was motivated, I was motivated. She was going out for dinner afterwards, she was. It's my birthday.
Negotiations committee has met with the teacher group twice.
Okay.
And that's going very well.
Good.
Not, I mean, I would say, like, language changes and stuff a lot less than the last time.
And that's you three, right?
I wasn't there last.
Tyler, but I mean, but it's you three, okay, I just wanted to.
Yeah, but it's.
Make sure we saw it on there again.
Yeah, it's been going, it's been going extremely well, so I would say we're.
Good progress, yeah. Great progress. We have delayed our next meeting a little bit because of.
Till the middle of next month, just with school starting and.
Yeah.
Schedules, with school starting are pretty busy.
Yeah.
So we pushed it back a little bit, but I think we're sitting in a great spot.
I haven't amended anything on it.
I don't think, I don't think that was it.
We do need to set a policy for maybe ten to twelve, so is anything, I'm not sure who, I don't know who's on it, honestly.
I'm on it. And Daphne.
Correct.
The meeting's on the twenty-second, I'll leave a little time to work on it, but, like, I heard you say you're leaving on vacation again.
Um, like.
Make him Zoom call in.
September, I don't know, eleven, is that unavailable?
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah. Okay. I'll write that down and I'll check with Daphne.
Our next negotiation meeting is on the seventeenth.
Does that work in your, I guess I didn't check.
I think it does, yeah, I think it does.
Okay.
What time is that?
Okay. Clint, you know this.
Five thirty, six o'clock.
Yeah. Better for me.
Hey, that's great for me too, so.
Five thirty-nine?
Five thirty, sure. I'm pretty sure I'm going to land the next day, so.
Brad, what do you do, teacher negotiations, what time?
Well, I think six again.
Sixty, okay.
Yeah, I never thought about that either.
I'm just like, with it being a Thursday, I could be wrong, but I'm just saying, Daphne, I mean, not that you can't meet without her, but.
I have a calendar right here.
Oh, is that one correct?
All the calendar, actually, the calendar is very updated this year. The most that I've ever seen.
Valley, are there cross-country in Worthington, tennis in Redwood, and seventh and eighth grade volleyball at, or, what grade is her daughter?
She's B squad. She's B squad.
Oh, yeah, we're good.
Oh, very good.
Way to pick the good day.
No, I was very impressed with, the calendar has a lot of information out this year that is correct, because I checked football and volleyball, and they were all correct, which is very not normal.
On the printed calendar?
And things will change, because that's just what happens. But that's good.
We'll give a shout-out to Deb.
Good job, Deb. It was, it's very.
She worked very hard.
It's much, it's usually.
Lot of hours, lot of hours.
No, that's.
And stuff spread all over her desk.
You need to give shout-out to Rick too, because he had to have them ready for me to get.
Yeah, that's true. It was a team effort.
Three more.
Anything else you want to do? Board report? Okay. Number nine, the Minister's Report, nine point one, superintendent's board report.
All right, so there is a breakdown, because we did have a meeting about the buses too.
Oh, yeah.
And so there was that, another meeting too.
That's right.
Where we had a couple of reps that had been, it was kind of an ad hoc type thing, or a couple of reps that were part of the negotiations of the bus contract met, as well as Daphne as the representative for activities with Rick, and we reviewed motor coach information. That's all attached to the board report that I have, so if you haven't had a chance to review it, please do, we can visit more. But it just gives a cost breakdown, motor coach and motor coach utilization, kind of the parameters that are in place. I think it helped to clarify some things. Certainly, we're going to continue to monitor that use and ensure that it's being used as it has been intended for use, so, again, you see that there for you. You see our August enrollment report attached as well. And then, there's a board bytes that's part of this report. That's just information from Tahoe. Tahoe will be incorporating those every month. In this one, you'll notice there's reference to the chef coming, they're trying to do a little bit more with the chef. Also, the new salad bar is in, and so we're super excited about that. Kim has shared that that's going to include the opportunity to add more protein items, which I know we've talked about at this table as well, to make certain we're giving our kids as many opportunities for protein choices as possible, because the serving sizes are pretty limited by the USDA and what qualifies as a meal, so that'll give some, again, options and choices for our kids. Portrait of Graduates already been mentioned, we'll take some action on that a little bit later. The phase one of the roof project, as you may have noted, materials have been cleared out, so the material that was here from the insulation that was being installed has been cleared, the dumpsters, all those things. You may have noticed on the sidewalks, or, excuse me, not the sidewalks, the parking lot, we have that, those cracks sealed, and what we'll start doing is looking to a chip-seal solution in it in subsequent years, just to maintain the integrity and the lifespan of that parking lot. I know they can last a really long time if they're maintained well, so we're trying to do our best there. We'll have to mention teacher negotiations, and I, like was already shared, I believe that's going very well, good conversation. And our process, just so if any board members wondering, we sit in the room, we put the master agreement up on the board, and we kind of go through it from top to bottom, and just ask, are there issues with any particular section of language? And we work together, wordsmith it, we then separate, take our, take our discussion back with us and process it, and then we'll come back to the next session and pick up right where we left off. So it's a very dynamic process, great conversation, and again, opportunities to look at challenges that may exist in our language or the master agreement, and to solve those working together. That's been a great process, so. The other thing that I wanted to share is just if you haven't done so, you see a custodian or a building's grounds person outside too, give them a shout-out, because they have done a tremendous job getting this building ready. Something I remember a couple of years ago, where we actually had to bring in INTECH to help get the school year ready, and that has not been a concern at all. So, again, Len and his crew have done an outstanding job, and Cody outside, I know that they have loaded a lot this year because of the rain, and the field looks amazing, our grounds look amazing, so again, if you see those people, give them a big shout-out, because it is a lot of work and they've done a nice job. Number of activities, this has already been loaded in the calendar. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring up, you'll see these colorful green boxes over here, that's the AML award that we're implementing this year. It's an opportunity for staff recognition, so parents can nominate, board members can nominate staff members, staff members can nominate staff members, students can, whoever, and it's the idea that we want to recognize staff who are going above and beyond, doing outstanding work, contributing to the community, contributing to the district. And then the idea is that the principals will have an opportunity to recognize those staff members that are nominated at their meeting, and ultimately, we'd like to bring one forward to every school board meeting and have an opportunity for the board to recognize our staff members as well. We don't do enough of that, in my opinion, and every opportunity we can use to recognize our staff for their contributions is time well spent. So, AML award achieving impact and momentum is what that stands for. So, again, just something we're really excited about and look forward to implementing as we go forward, and taking that to a whole new level of staff recognition.
Where are the rocks is going to be then?
The three boxes, so one box will be in the elementary office, one box in the little school, high school office, and then one box in the district office.
Oh, okay.
And they have little slots on the side where the cards will be located, and it lays out what the word is about, and just a real quick, couple of checkboxes, a little narrative somebody can just write, so-and-so did this for me, and it made a difference, drop it in, and away you go.
I think that'll be good. So like, let's just say there's twenty-five people in a box, are you recognizing every twenty-five of those, or I mean, that they were nominated?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure if, like, of those twenty-five, you'd randomly just.
No, it would really take a point to nominate and recognize all those, because again, if it's worthy of putting, taking the time to fill one out and recognize them, it's worthy of recognition at the staff meetings.
Okay, perfect.
It might be a good thing to put on Facebook, like, on some of our posts like that too.
It's a good idea.
Especially if parents can nominate, you know, just so that people know that they can nominate.
Yeah.
From Clint's report, I want to give a shout-out to Rick and how prepared he was for that meeting on the motor coach, because the information he brought to the meeting with what we're charged, what the groups pay, what the difference is, you know, all the trips listed out throughout the year per sport or activity, it really gave me a lot of clarity of what true cost of the district.
Sure, sure.
And without that, you know, it's just, what is it?
Yeah, you don't know. Yes.
Yeah, he had it all laid out in detail, that was, it was prepared.
Moving on, nine point two, principal's board report.
All right. I do want to make mention of Dr. Willard's involvement with the Minnesota State Fair and going to attend to support our FFA and our Ag students last weekend. I see Ms. Rush is here, and we will be attending the Minnesota State Fair this coming weekend. I'm very excited about it, since I've never actually been to a state fair of any kind at all. And so I have a map. I have a map and everything, and I'm ready to go watch, I think it's the nieces and nephews.
Have enough time to see it all.
With the sheep and all. Very excited about that to support our students. Dr. Willard, you mentioned some things about enrollment, just today, we had actually eight new enrollees in the middle and high school, just today, and so I anticipate that, I would anticipate that to go up just a little bit in the next week or so. Usually, people do tend to wait until that last moment. The first thing I want to talk about is our new School Links portal, so I mentioned this to Tammy and to Katie last week when we met with the Portrait of a Graduate representative, Laura and Dr. Willard. One of the things that we almost feel is missing, or it's not quite seamless enough, is this whole concept of how can we keep everything that our students need as far as career planning goes, scholarships, grades, college visits, recommendation letters, alumni relations, all of those things really should be kept in one portal. Right now, we use several, and it's hard to manage. And right now, our high school counselor is emailing, emails students at any time there's a scholarship, and so sometimes things sort of get lost, because we've got this portal for ACT, and we have this one for our state testing data. And so we are going to try this new portal, and it is called School Links. I did a whole lot of research on it with the counseling team last spring, and participated in quite a few Zooms and some training, and so I outlined, excuse me, outlined a few things. We start at the middle school level, so in grade six, students are beginning to take surveys and really go down the path of what am I interested in? And so how does that fit into what we're trying to do here in Pipestone with Portrait of a Graduate? Let's say, after about the second or third year, we find out that an eighth grader or a freshman, or the majority of them, have absolutely no interest in, let's say, this topic or this class that happens to be an elective. Well, why would we keep that? Why would we not try to come up with something that the students actually want to take and are interested in, that might actually change their trajectory for when they graduate from high school? So that's kind of the underlying goal, and we are just getting started with it. We have our final training in September, and everything will basically be housed in one area. It's like, it's like having a separate computer for, you know, work, a separate one for Facebook, a separate one for personal email, it's literally all at one time, and having a separate one for, you know, your Amazon account. It's all at one time, and the really cool thing about this particular platform, this portal, is that parents are able to get a username and password, and to see exactly what their child is doing, what they have done, what they've applied to, what types of scholarships they're eligible for, and so I think it's going to bridge that gap that I think we might feel right now, just in the general public school sector, that there's a little bit of a disconnect between what's happening at home and what's happening at school. So this is one more way for us to communicate that out. I have high hopes about this program, and I can give you more information if you're interested, I could have gone on and on about this, so. Senior privileges, so I've got my, we're just really excited to be starting out the year here at the high school and middle school. In Pipestone, we've got senior privileges. In the past, before I became the principal, it was typically a second semester sort of privilege that began after that. Now, I don't necessarily agree with that, I like to start it right away, the second or the third week of school, so that every single student has that ability before they're, you know, they have maybe poor grades, below a C, or before they start coming to school late. Let's give them all that opportunity to feel what it is like to have senior privileges, to be able to leave lunch, or to leave during a PSEO, and have a little bit more of an adult status. Last year, we did that, and I found that the majority of the students actually were able to keep their senior privileges, because they did not want to lose them, because they knew what it felt like. So with that, parents of seniors will be receiving a, just your typical parent permission slip, where I outline, if your child has a PSEO, then they leave during that time, and you're okay with that, and your child may leave during lunch, that's during this time, are you okay with that? They may lose them for things like tardies and maybe being deficient in their grading, but for the most part, it's been, it's been really great, and students love, love leaving for lunch, even if it's just for a peanut butter sandwich at home, for some reason, it's better than just staying in the building. I'm not sure. Okay. We do have some new staff that I'd like to highlight, and we've got Maggie Wurdis, who Ms. Rush has been working with very closely, thank you so much for doing that. She's a new graduate, and she's going to be a great for our program. We also have two teachers that we have hired from the Philippines. And while I wish they were here already, we're kind of running into some logistical issues with the US Embassy and also the Department of Education in the Philippines, so we are having some delays there, unfortunately. In order to sort of mitigate that, and it's not perfect, but Kristen Brockwork has agreed to do a long-term subbing for the eighth grade math position, and Clarinda Loving, who's getting her degree in special ed, has agreed to do the long-term sub for the sped teaching position that would replace Brittany Rensel, that resigned last year. So I'm working on that. Right now, we're just working through some of that paperwork, which can be just a little bit frustrating, but I hope to have more information and some good news for you at the next board meeting. I have attached a letter from Lyra, Mrs. Stiles was a part of that Zoom interview, and we were all really impressed with her. She's incredible, she's got a master's degree, she's going to be the math teacher, she feels horrible that she's not going to be here in time, but this is one of the letters that she's asked us to hand out to her students. To piggyback a little bit on what Dr. Willard mentioned about the new salad bar, they also are planning on adding some different soup options for the fall, so we would have obviously the salad bar, we'd have armenio, and then we'd have a soup option with a side of bread for the colder temperature, where soup just feels like the right thing to do. We do have some upcoming professional development, we've got three different artificial intelligence seminars coming in, it's one of those areas that we just really need to get on, on top of, ahead of, I don't know that we can ever get ahead of AI, but how can we leverage it to our best potential? How can we help our students leverage it? And how can we leverage it in the classroom as teachers? So there's a gentleman, his name is William Grooby, and he has done work with Sioux Falls School District, among others. He comes highly recommended, and we've got that coming up in October is our first one. I think that's all I have, unless there are any questions at all for me.
Any questions for Sonya? One thing, one thing with the teachers from the Philippines, and I was at NRE when I sat in on a session about, there's like, three districts in the state they're doing, but at the time, I think two districts were speaking. But one thing, and all of them, all of them really love the teachers they get from that, but the cool thing that, I don't know if they shared in the deal, but they shared with us, is part of, part of their need is they have to do like a show and tell with the kids about the Philippines. So they have to share their culture, it's part of the.
Part of the program.
Program, which I thought was pretty cool.
That is. Yeah, I love that, I hope I, hopefully I can get to meet them right away, and we can get planning on that. That'd be great. Thank you.
How long is there visa bid for? Three?
Three to five years.
Yeah.
The intent is they would be here three to five, yeah.
They have already befriended themselves, once we offered positions to both of these young women. I shared the emails out, and I said, okay, guys, get to know each other, talk amongst yourselves, please start collaborating, and they decided right away that they wanted to live together in an apartment or a rental home in Pipestone here, so we're helping them look for that at the moment.
Cool. Any questions? All right.
All right. First one, the Portrait of a Graduate, so our leadership team at the elementary, as well as the middle and high school, got together this past week and are working on Portrait of a Graduate. There is nine team members at the elementary, across the grade levels, specials, service teams, and they're very excited about the work. I have one that's going to be going on maternity leave, and she wants to be here to do that work when she's on maternity leave. So this is just important work for our kids and for the future of Pipestone, and I'm really excited about it, as well as my team, they all are excited about what is to come. Back to school, family connection conferences, this is one of my favorite times when families get to come in and have that one-on-one individual attention with the classroom teacher, and I think building that relationship, that homeschool connection from day one is so essential. And so just welcoming families into the building and having them meet and greet all of the teachers, they'll get a time to be able to go to the specials classrooms, our title, sped, ML, and just meet everybody across the building, and just check out the campus, which is awesome. Books, so we got a new literacy curriculum, Lisa will be talking about that. So the old curriculum, we have journeys, and it's sitting out in front of the elementary main office area, so kids get to take books home, which is awesome, there's so much out there. I encourage you to take a peek, and we've got big bags that kids can just pile books in there and take it home. The playground got a little update, so one of them is the flagpole, I'm super excited about that, I'm going to be partnering with the Legion and Brad and stuff and do some things with that, but we have a new flagpole out on the playground, I encourage you to go out there and check that out. We're going to do a little bit of stuff with the fifth grade, as well as, we're going to have a moment where the entire student body is going to go out and we're going to say the pledge together this year. There's a communication board out there, I know that it was approved to go on the, out on the playground, so that's out there for our students. Great thing for our non-verbal students to be able to communicate with staff as well as their friends. A new sped classroom, so we went from three sped teachers to four sped teachers, and we just needed another space. So in the library, where there was kind of a classroom. So in the library, where there was kind of a classroom area attached to that was like a conference area and that conference room was never really used. And part of the library, kind of the walkway area, wasn't really used, so we kind of reconfigured some stuff. We built a little bit of a wall, so after this, if you want to check it out, I encourage you to. So now we have a space for our other sped teacher and it's a big giant space for our students and for our teacher, which is really exciting. On the playground, we have a volleyball net that's going up, so check that out when you check out the flag. And then last but not least, all of my new staff at the elementary. They're very excited and ready to jump in. So we are fully staffed at the elementary, which is so exciting. And then this is enrollment as of when I wrote the board report last week, so it probably just changed just a tiny bit, but that's what we're looking at for the elementary. Questions?
Any questions for Jen?
I am glad that the elementary teachers are excited about that Portrait of a Graduate because we talked about how important it is to start that at a very young level. You know, like if it just keeps building, then it'll be really cool to get them started young.
All right. Nine point three, Curriculum Teaching and Learning Board Report.
This summer, on August 13th, we had our key news PARACOMFERENCE, which is a required conference for all of the paraprofessionals in the state of Minnesota. They have to complete six hours of training prior to the school year starting. So they have a keynote speaker and they get to choose the breakout sessions that they wish to attend and that was in Worthington this year. And then we also had CPI Refresher Training and CPI is a Crisis Prevention Institute, which is a nonviolent crisis prevention intervention training. So they can, they learn skills to recognize, prevent, respond to students that might have some behavioral concerns. And then, as Jennifer said, we got our new reading curriculum, which is Benchmark Advance. Last week on Thursday, we had two representatives from their company meet with all of the teachers that will be utilizing it and gained a lot of great information on the curriculum, the online platform, and how to use the resources. And then we'll have a second training in January where they will come back and our teachers actually get to decide if they want to just take a deeper dive, if they have questions that they need answered, if they just want to review of all of the things because it's a lot of information that they got in a very short amount of time. Started back to school in service today. Elementary staff had zero abuse training and then this afternoon, the entire staff had mandated reporter training. So everyone is trained what to do if students report something that may have happened to them. They know what steps to take, who to reach out to, what forms to fill out and all of those things. Then on Wednesday of this week, we have the Kuanis luncheon for the new teachers. And so they, when they go, they get paired with a Kuanis member who does a little interview with them and then the Kuanis member introduces them to the rest of the, the members that are there. And then finally, we have a new database system, which I know that Sonya talked about, one for the counselors, but this database is called EduClima and it replaces Viewpoint, which we had previously, but Viewpoint is no longer. EduClima bought them over, or bought them out. So everything from synergy, MCA tests, NWEA tests, DIBELS, all the behavior things that teachers or administration puts into synergy, IEP information, all gets loaded into this one database. So if a teacher is wondering, ooh, how, how has Suzie been doing in the last three years? You can type in her name and you have all of the data from the last at least three years. And so that will help, you know, with monitoring student progress, with maybe some interventions, identify at-risk students. It just is a huge database and we still are working on loading all of the information in and as soon as it is ready, we will have trainings for all of our staff to be able to utilize that platform. So I am very excited about that. So it's all, all the information in one place. That's all I have.
Any questions for Lisa? Thanks. Number 10, Unfinished Business. 10.1, approved 2025-2026 Middle School, High School Handbook.
This is the second reading, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep. Just need to take action. Any questions or get a motion to approve?
So much.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 10.2, approved secondary policies 414 and 524.
We did update 524 Tyler's suggestion when we pulled it.
Any discussion, questions?
May not like.
What it was before, what was in it?
No, no, I'm just like on the 414, just the file name.
What does it say?
Well, it's just not, something's not spelled right.
Oh, yeah. I had it at the top there.
Which one?
If you look at how it's linked at the top, not.
But it's probably not even on the.
Not in the policy.
It's just the.
You go to the board book, it's.
I didn't even look to see. I put my glasses on.
Policy's correct. Everything in the policy is correct.
I feel like maybe I noticed that last month and I didn't say anything. Yeah.
That's just.
Again, it's, again, it's not, not a big deal. And I think last, last month, I did realize that it wasn't on the policy incorrect, so.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Musical.
Have a motion to approve. So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11, 11.1, National FFA Convention Overnight Trip. Welcome.
Thank you. I feel like I've presented to you guys quite a bit in the future, which has been pretty good.
It looks like you were just here doing.
I know, right? So we have a team competing at National FFA Convention for our meat evaluation team. So they would do everything about like the muscles in the meat, which one's the best, why is it the best? They learn about the processing. They get a tour of some insides of a meat processing plant, which usually they don't open to the public, so it's really kind of cool to see that processing side of livestock production going from the live animal to the actual product they were able to consume at the end. So students have learned a lot about meat evaluation. In the last two years, they have been competing in this team. So we have three seniors and one junior that qualified to attend the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis. They get to leave on about Tuesday, October 28th, and then they come back on November 1st, so it'll be over Halloween. They will be in Indianapolis is where the convention is held and then their actual contest is at Purdue. So they get to utilize their, pretty much brand new meat lab and processing facility that they have there as part of their contest. So it's pretty, it's pretty neat experience for the kids to be able to have. And then we will request that our transportation of the team in the school suburban and my substitute teacher would be covered. Everything else is covered by our chapter. The Pipestone Ag Chamber Committee utilizes the funds from the Purba Ribbon Auction at the county fair for National FFA Convention trips and National 4H trips. So we will be utilizing some of their donation. And then the Minnesota Livestock Breeders Association always contributes X amount of dollars to the first and second place team from the state convention to go on to these national trips. So some of those will come in after the trip in April of next year, whenever they kind of float through, they'll be coming through the school board for approval on those donations as well. Everything else will be covered by FFA. So that would be Maggie's and my request for our National FFA trip.
Is Maggie going attending as well?
No, Maggie would not be attending. It'd be just me. And potentially our coach, Philberg. He's checking his schedule if he's able to attend. Are there any questions?
I think, I think this is amazing.
It is awesome.
You know, graduating a long time from Pipestone, I think Pipestone set a, sent a team in this probably more times than they, than not. Over the last like 30 years. It's, it's incredible.
All behind Philberg.
Yeah.
And from what I understand, there's like six younger kids that are trying to get on the next meats team. So they have a little competition themselves just to try to get on the next one.
It's only, it's only four, so.
It'll only be four.
No substitutes in FFA. That's what it is. Yeah, I think this is my third meat evaluation team in my five years of teaching. So pretty impressive.
It's awesome, yeah, for sure.
Lots of hours put in behind the team too. Phil makes sure they practice before they attend. That is very true. Any other questions I can answer for you, Ms.?
I, I would say, you know, I entertain a motion to approve.
I would approve the $1,800 donate, or from the district cost for the substitute teacher and the transportation of the students and teachers.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you. Stay out.
Thanks, Emily.
11.2, Resolution Accepting Donations. We have two. One from Gwen Never for $300. It's a donation to baseball in memory of Gary. And then a $4,000 donation from the egg committee for FFA National Convention. I'd like to thank both of these groups for these donations. Pretty impressive. Can I get a motion to accept these two donations?
So much.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.3, Surplus Rock from Roof Project.
We have some rock, if you haven't noticed. And just doing some rough measurements, you see the inclusion in the packet pile equates to about 27 cubic feet of, of the rock. I think you meant cubic yard, actually, not cubic feet. But what we are ultimately looking at is declaring this pile as surplus. We've had some inquiries already from folks within the community or right next to the pile itself and this would allow us to proceed with dispersing of the rock. And we're also looking at other projects around the school that might need rock, but that can be secondary because we'll take off just as much again next year. And the idea is that once we declare this surplus, we envision that we'd sell it at $5 a yard, so very affordable.
So they're, they're not throwing rock back on top?
No, no. It's an adhered roof system. Now, the ballasted wasn't adhered, so you have put the rock down to keep it from flopping in the wind where this is adhered to the insulation. So the new insulation is screwed on top of the existing roofing system and then the new roof is adhered to that.
Okay.
If you're willing to take a peek at what it looks like, after we're done this evening, you just walk up the steps and look out the window and you'll see right over top of where it's adhered. It's a great sunbathing spot because it is bright white. So just in case you're looking down the road.
I guess I think as a district, we should use as much as we can ourselves before we open it up too.
And that's what we intend to do, that we would get it around the buildings.
Well, it's our rocks, so let's use as much as we can before we sell it. I guess the other question I had is why did we pile it on the lawn?
Closest proximity.
But if we piled it on the asphalt, we wouldn't wreck the lawn. Now we're going to have to fix all that lawn.
That was pretty weedy before, so I wasn't too worried about it. And we didn't know how quickly it'd be gone, so we didn't want to impact traffic flow or buses or parking and so we just put it there. And when we, when we were making that determination, yeah, that was kind of a beat-up patch of lawn already, so we didn't feel too bad about that. And like I said, close proximity for them to get it off the roof and dump it.
We'll have as much again next year.
Well, I guess, yeah, are you going to fix that spot or are you going to just put it there again next year?
Probably put it there again next year and then.
Then you can get two years. You say you're not keep wrecking lawns, but.
Exactly, yeah.
Because when they go to scooping it up, you're going to wreck the lawn.
Yeah, sure enough, yeah.
Why make a motion that we designate this rock surplus?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes.
Tyler, did you second that?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
11.4, approved transportation contract with Southwest Minnesota Christian for 2025-2026.
This is the same every year, same year?
Same, same thing.
I just asked them to fill in a few holes, the rough numbers and.
Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
So much.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 11.5, approval of Portrait of a Graduate.
Well, every time I look at this, I'm going to think of the song Cherry It's a Fire because I introduced this to staff today. I'm actually using that as the background music going through each of the items. I would just like to reiterate a huge thank you to our teachers, our students, our staff members, community members that were part of community meetings, community members and business leaders that answered surveys, board members that answered surveys and participated in a variety of events. There's been multiple versions of this that have been created ahead of this and ultimately came through that teacher group that was mentioned earlier. And the idea is that we simplify it down to five key attributes that we've identified through all those focus groups and surveys and community meetings. Those five attributes are defining our graduates as collaborators, communicators, community contributors, strategic thinkers and performance-minded individuals. And then ultimately through, again, the reiterations of this, putting it in student-friendly language. So for example, the collaborator stating, we do our best, stay positive and cheer on our group. Or the strategic thinker, we consider diverse perspectives, welcome feedback and make informed decisions. As I shared with, with the group of staff members this morning in the back to school address, this can impact everything that we do in, in our system. And the example that I gave was even some of the fundraising that our students do. And I'll just share the example and I'm guessing many of you have probably received the same thing, a text message asking for, for fundraising for a different activity or whatever the case might be. That really doesn't align with what we want in the Portrait of a Graduate because it doesn't teach kids to be good communicators. It doesn't teach them to be community contributors where if they have to go and solicit directly to a person, you have to communicate. You have to make that uncomfortable, cross the threshold, stick out a hand and say, hi, I'm, and we're raising money for, would you be willing to help us out because? And so using that simple example today with, with staff, I think it resonated. Another thing that we talked about is we introduced the community contributor part, for example, was doing like in the fall and then the spring, a couple of what we call, would call Arrow Days of Service, where we would have our students go out into the community and help, whether it's raking leaves or cleaning up some ditches or just anything that, that shows the value of community service and community contributions. I think about that in the context that I shared with Kuanis, that they're an organization that does so much for our school, but they have a very small group of people that participate in Kuanis. And if we. in Kuanis, and if we don't find ways to fill those gaps that are left by current community leaders, those civic organizations are going to cease to exist. So again, just some simple examples, and the fact that we arrived at this through extensive input of the community, the staff, board members, a whole host of individuals, and I would say most importantly, the students in their focus groups last spring. I'm really excited about what this means for our community and for our district going forward, and how it can help transform some of the things that we're doing in our teaching and learning practices. So we happen to answer any specific questions others may have, and I know the other three administrators were very instrumental in being part of those discussions as well with their team members. So this is a big deal for our district. It's a big deal. It's not going to be just words on the wall. It's going to be the way we do business. And as you're contemplating, thinking about it, the next iteration that comes from this or the next phase of this process then would be to update our strategic plan and how we utilize our strategic plan to implement our Portrait of a Graduate for our students going forward. But it's not just some arbitrary numbers and metrics that we're putting on a board. It really is very intentionally aligned, so we know what we're working on achieving, and then the strategic plan will help us define on how we're going to achieve that.
Questions? Discussion?
I thought this looked good, just because it's there, you can read it quickly. It's very, you know, easy to read, and I do like that it's friendly for students. I mean, it's not these long, drawn-out words and all these things that are always like, oh, you know what that means? You know, I mean, I think it's good that it's very to the point.
One thing I failed to mention, and that I would like to, you'll notice that it's actually a two-page document. The second half is all in Spanish, and we did have one of our community input sessions around this. I give a tremendous amount of credit to Junior, who was there, and there were a couple of individuals from the Hispanic and Latino community. Through the entire conversation, Junior was translating the entire thing. And my ears were getting fatigued because you listened and you tried to, and so I applaud them, and their input was tremendously helpful as well, because it really, again, ensured that we were taking a broad perspective on everybody that we serve in our community. And I thought it was really a valuable contribution that Junior and those two parents made as well. So I didn't want to miss that opportunity, because you do see that we have written in Spanish as well.
And would be approved the Portrait of a Graduate as the documents are on the board book, I guess.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. 12, Adjourned. I guess I got one thing before you adjourned, Clint. I'd like to thank you for attending the Minnesota State Fair. It's greatly appreciated. The kids really appreciate that when you come by walking and just visit with a lot of them and have that conversation. That's great, Clint, to see a superintendent there to help partake in them activities. It doesn't go unnoticed by the parents either. I mean, they appreciate that.
I appreciate that. It's always fun to see those kids. I was a four-ager for many years myself, and I was thinking about that this morning, as a matter of fact, just we're all in the youth development business, and how we, how we can think about Portrait of a Graduate, and we can continue to live together around youth development. Our community does so much, and we can do so much more for our kids in that space. So no, thank you, we appreciate that.
Get a motion to adjourn?
So much.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion passes. Adjourned.